Recording in progress.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance all about among the solids. As Mr. Kitwell, he'll lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Next on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Sunday.
Okay, we have second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is recognition. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to ask Ms. Vicki Snodgrass if she would come up. We have a large list of FBLA winners from Thomas Walker High School, but unfortunately, I think these students are also involved in activities, softball, baseball, tennis, and I think all of them were tied up again tonight, but Snodgrass, would you allow me to read the list?
Yes, please go ahead.
At the regional competition, third place, Jackson Loeb, Business Communications, Lydia Schiffer, intro to FBLA. Second place, Leah Cavan, Agribusiness, Chloe Markham, Computer Applications, J.D. Ogle, Computer Problem Solving, Savannah Smith, Job Interview, Taylor Everly, intro into Business Communication. First place, Blake Wiggel, Accounting, Elizabeth Dixon, Computer Applications, and Noah Cavan, Journalism. Ms. Snodgrass?
Yes. I have about 34 kids this year in FBLA, which has grown in number since the pandemic. These kids are outstanding citizens at Thomas Walker High School, and I don't actually tell them they have to do this. They come to me and they sign up. And then they take it upon themselves with my help to study. We have practice tests. We have a study day usually during fourth period if they have a class that they can get up at about 2:45. We spent many weeks working on this, and everybody when we were EVA wise on February 28th said, "Man, this must be Thomas Walker Awards Day." So I was very proud because we are up against schools like Castlewood, Honeacre, John I. Burton, Union, Buchanan Dickinson County Schools, and so we were really well represented. The top first place and second place students were able to go to state competition March 31st through April 1st in Reston, Virginia. But again, softball, baseball, track, tennis took away, and I had only four go. But I did have some students placed in state. They don't get to go on to national because you had to be first or second place. Introduction to Business Communication was Taylor Everly. She placed ninth in the state. Computer Applications, Chloe Markham, placed 10th. So out of the four that went, two did place in state. I also had two ladies that applied to the Virginia FBLA Foundation Leadership Institute for 2023. This was held while we were up at state in Reston. Out of the whole state, my two girls got to be with 26 other kids, Leah Cavan and Chloe Markham. So this institute featured workshops dealing with leadership skills, working with other students from around the state, and they absolutely loved it. They did receive certificates. They have been asked to come back next year. So, you know, they may not ever go into business, but they're getting valuable leadership skills through FBLA. And one last thing, and I will stop. My chapter, we are in the EVA wise district. We were only one of two that received an honor chapter award this year. So we keep a scrapbook. It was us and Honeacre High School. So I'm very proud of these kids. I think in 23 years at Thomas Walker, 28 overall, that's the most I've ever had place at regional and at state. I have had a first place winner in state going to national, but that's been many moons ago. So thank you all.
We also have certificates, Ms. Belter. Do we have those certificates?
She gave them. I will give them out tomorrow. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, we also have the VSB-A art contest winners. Ms. Belter, will you assist in recognizing these students when I call them out? I'll start with the elementary school winners. Third place was Ms. Bella Garrett from St. Charles Elementary. And if you're here, if you'll come up and see Ms. Belter, she'll give you your certificate. I don't know who all is here tonight. Second place, Ms. Lily Hammond from Flatwoods Elementary. And first place, Bentley Shelburne from Drydell Elementary. The middle school winners, third place, Aubreyana Mullins from Jonesville Middle. Anna Maria Graham from Pennington Middle. And first place, Jessie Crabtree from Jonesville Middle. High school winners had one entry, Jaclyn Bradford from Lee High School. What we will do, we'll take these exhibits to the region for the Virginia School Board Association, present our winners to compete against everyone from the region. So I want to, if you would, give another round of applause to these young people. We also have the Robot Drone League. Ms. Cindy Nicodem, they may all be outside.
I'm going to try to kind of line us back here a little bit.
And Cindy, I'll turn that over to you to recognize all your students. I think you have a large selection here tonight. I think she has a junior team, a JV team, and a varsity team. Is that correct?
Right there. Yeah, and stop.
Good evening. We're the Cyber General's Robot Drone League teams. Our mentors are Ms. Nicodem, Ms. Kennedy, and Ms. Robinette. To begin our presentation, Ms. Nicodem will introduce our RDL Junior Pilot Team.
Okay, so this year we had a junior pilot team, and RDL stands for Robot Drone League, in case some of you aren't the parents of these children and you don't know what we're talking about. And the people that put this on, this is our third year participating, wanted to have a junior team with kids grades K through five, and they asked three school systems, and our school system was one that got to participate. So this is their first year we had kids first through fourth on our team. And they had to learn to fly a drone. They had to do presentations. They had to learn how to program also. So they're going to each come up and introduce themselves. So the little pilot team will come on up here. Do you want to start Gavin?
I'm Gavin, and I was when I go to Elkins Hall. I'm in fourth grade, and I am the drone pilot and the team captain.
My name is Raylan. I'm in third grade. I go to Flatwoods Elementary, and I was a drone pilot.
I'm Anna, and I am in third grade. I go to Flatwoods School, and I am drone pilot.
My name is Knox, and I'm in fourth grade, and I go to Flatwoods, and I was a robot pilot.
My name is Kyle. I go to Elkins Elementary Schools. I drove the RVRs. Oh, I'm eight years old.
Second grade.
Second grade. I forgot the second.
So Gavin and Raylan are going to show you the drones that they used in their competition, and it's over on the table. And anything you want to tell them about what you did?
We threw them in the competition, and we had to answer questions and go through groups.
You want to add anything Gavin? All right. Thank you, Raylan. You can put that back. Kyle and Anna were our robot pilots, and they're going to show you the RVRs that they used. And if you want to walk back there and show. This one's got the insides of it. And if you just want to kind of show them, is there anything you want to tell them about what you did with the cars? What did you have to do with your?
We had to do coding, drive around the bridge at the competition. There were a lot of, we had to like walk through.
Keep taking them more.
Okay. Anything else you want to add Gavin? That you did with the robot?
I coded it.
You coded it. All right. All right. Thank you. Can you all put them back on the table? Can you set them back on the table? And Anna is going to just kind of lay this book, and you all can look at it sometime, and we can get it back later. That shows what they did for the season that they had to turn in to the judges. And she's going to set it on the, you can set it over here on the table, and they can look at it. Can you set it on the table there too? All right. And Raylan's going to introduce the next part.
Ms. Kennedy is going now.
Now Ms. Kennedy will introduce the RDL JV team.
Hi, Ms. Kennedy. I'm going to introduce these RDL JV, our junior varsity team. We have seven members this year, four which are returning members, or sorry, four that are new members, and we have two that could not make it here. We have five here. Five here. We had two that could not make it here tonight. But we're very proud of them. They had a very successful season. There's new guys stepping up into their role, but I'm going to let them introduce themselves. You guys come on up right here, and they're going to tell you what they did, their roles for the team.
I am Ellen McAllister. I am in eighth grade, and I am the lab technician for robotics and I am the drone programmer.
I'm Luke Young. I am in the seventh grade. I go to Pennington Middle School, and I'm the team captain and robot pilot.
I'm William Mealy. I go to ELDIO Middle School, and I'm in sixth grade. I was the drone pilot this year.
My name is Ella Shell. I'm in the seventh grade, and I was the autonomous drone pilot, and I was a lab technician assistant.
I am Renton Britton. I'm in the sixth grade. I'm from Drone Middle School, and I was one of the RDL robot pilots for this year.
All right. So now we're going to have these, did Ella come up and show you the drones that they use during competition this year?
So this is a Telo Talon drone. I use this in the teleop period to answer STEM questions.
Do you want to explain to them a little bit about what teleop is?
So teleop is whenever we take our drone and we fly it across the RDL field, and then we, and then they have a TV on the other side that has, I think it's five STEM questions. And if we answer them, it was 100 points, right?
The app that we use for this, app that we use for this is Drone Blocks, which will allow us to code this very easily. And we also drove this around with an app, and we used it in our competition. Do you know what the other app was from? It was, it was the Telo drone app. Yeah, the Local Robo. All right, thank you guys. We're going to let Luke and Britton show you guys the two robots that we use. They have two different ones to perform their tasks.
This is the Go Build A Robot that we use, and we have this linear actuator on it to pick up all the balls. And we use that controller there to drive it, and we coded it using the Raspberry Pi.
This is the DJI robot we use to, for the autonomous part of the competition. And we also use the DJI to do the smaller tasks, such as picking up the tubes to get more points and picking up the power cells to play small balls so we could get even more points.
All right. Alice is going to tell you about some of the awards they've won at the competitions that they competed in this year.
We have won the Tennessee Regional Champions, Virginia Regional Champions, Final Competition Overall Champions, also won Engineering Presentation, Awards Top Dog, Top Score, and Judgment Of Us.
And Brittany's rules, the head engineer notebook over there. This is some of the things they have to show the judges when they go in for competition each time. Thank you guys.
The JV team was undefeated this season, so.
Now Mrs. Nicodem will introduce the RDL varsity.
Okay, so as they're coming up, very quickly, we only have one member not here. He has his soccer game tonight, so Jacob Elkins is also a part of our team. So they only had five members. They did an awesome job. They're going to tell you about some of the stuff that they have done. They've all been a part of our deal for, two of them for three years and two for two years. So I'm going to let them go ahead and introduce themselves and tell you what their parts were.
I'm Samuel Dunn. I'm in the 10th grade, sorry. And I was the drone coder and the autonomous drone pilot for our team.
My name's Clara Cox. I'm in the ninth grade, and I was the lab technician and team captain for our team.
My name is Wesley Honeycutt. I was the drone pilot for our team, and I am in 10th grade at ELDIO.
I'm Kirsten Kennedy. I was the scoring captain, and I'm in 10th grade.
Okay, Clara is going to show you the varsity robot. This was actually Jacob's job. Maybe you can tell them what the linear actuator does, if it was similar. But Jacob was the pilot for both robots, and he's not here. And the JV team kind of showed them. If they can show you theirs. They didn't tell you the name of theirs. What was the name of yours, JV team? General Jackson.
General Lee.
The General Lee. We thought they might get banned, but we let them keep them anyway because, but they did. So what does the linear actuator do?
It goes up and down to lower the gate and raise the gate. So it traps the scoring elements in here so it can bring them back to the lab.
And then how did you all make that board?
With the Glowforge.
So a lot of the VOTech teachers are a part of this too. We use their 3D printers, the Glowforge machine. Our auto mechanic gets in on that, helping us if we strip screws. So it's with our CAD. Mr. Bales helps them with that, so it's a team effort. Now Samuel and Wesley are going to tell you a little bit more, if they have anything to add to the drones, they were both drone pilots.
So with these drones, we use them to fly around to the other side of the field and look at the STEM questions so that we could answer them and get the points directed to those STEM questions, which was 100 points, they said. And we would also use these to try to help guide the balls over to the area so we could collect the points for just the balls in general. And anything else?
No, I think that's it.
I think that's about, that's the only uses for the drones.
Yeah. All right. And then Kirsten is going to tell you what awards the varsity team won this year.
We got the Tennessee Regional Champions Award, the Virginia Regional Champions, the Engineering Presentation, Top Dog, and Top Score.
All right. And Samuel has a copy of their engineering documentation, if you all would like to look at that. Before they close, I just wanted to say that they have been a huge part of incorporating STEM into all of the schools. They have done STEM nights at the schools, taken the drones. They have taken their robots in and let kids drive them, showed them how they had to use them to answer questions, showed the coding. They have done presentations at school conferences with two other teachers to try to get teachers to use this stuff and try to get other districts to start robotics teams. They've asked them to come to teachers' things in Wise County, Scott County, to try to encourage them to get some teams started too. So, and some of our original members that have been here from day one, Beast missed out a year on us there. He took off on us and was gone. That started in like fourth and fifth grade. Wesley, Clara, Luke, if he'll step forward, and Beast have been in it now four years, I guess, from the beginning. So we give these kids a big hand. They're a big part of incorporating and teaching these kids more about STEM. They help with our STEM camp in the summer. If you send your kids to that, they all come and help with that also.
This concludes our presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
I would like to give the sponsors a big hand, because I think you heard it. They're from different schools, so this is one of the one events or groups in Lee County that has people from different schools that come together and work on the same team. So I think our sponsors need a round of applause as well.
Do you want to give the certificates out with her?
We all have the certificates.
Yes. Do you want to give them out, or you want, do you want to hand them to them? All right. So we'll, we'll start with our little fellers first. They might be on their knock Stafford. Raylan Stafford. Anna Taylor. Kyle Hoover. And Gavin Young. So that's our RDL Junior Pilot Team. Renton Britton. This is our JV. Hey, pretty good here. Abby McAllister. Beast. That's our nickname for William. Because when he was in third grade, he was coding and teaching the college kids about CAD, the first year that we went over to RDL. So they gave him the nickname Beast. Ella Shell. Mallory couldn't be here tonight, and we should have Luke Young. And that is our JV team. Then our varsity, Clara Cox. Samuel Dunn. Wesley Honeycutt. Kirsten Kennedy. And then Jacob Elkins, who is not here also. So that's our varsity. Thank you very much. I know there was a lot of us, and it took a little time to do all that, but they do put a lot of time in staying after school and doing Saturdays for hours. And some of them are doing the underwater robotics now, mates, so they'll probably present next school year because their competition is until the middle of May. And so they do both. So they start about September, and they don't finish till May, the ones that are doing that. So you can look forward to hearing how that goes too. Okay, yes. And we'll grab our stuff and get out of your own way. So if you all can get robots, get posters, thank you for having us.
Thank you all.
Thank you. We have public comments. Is there any public comments? Just remind you not to mention anybody by name. You have five units. Please, please tell us your name.
I'm not going to stick my mouth. I just wanted to do our made decision on the Thomas Walker out first.
It's going to be, it's going to be both of them.
Hey, Willie?
Listen, I don't want to up the agenda tonight.
Okay.
Thanks. Anybody else? No? All right. Mr. Chairman, we also have Alicia Callan from Valid Health here to do a presentation on the Career Exploration Program.
Good evening, and thank you all for having me to speak tonight. My name is Alicia Callan. I am the program coordinator for career and pathway exploration through Valid Health, as well as the grant liaison for our partnership with the Claude Moore Scholars Charitable Foundation. And I just wanted to talk to you all about some of the work that we've been doing over in Wise County and share some of the updates on that work. Last year, we started in a five-year grant with the Claude Moore Charitable Foundation, which is a foundation that does career and path, career and pathway development exploration in the state of Virginia. It's available to any school district in the state of Virginia, and we started in with a $500,000 grant with them to start a middle school health exploration class in Wise County. This is a partnership between Valid Health, Wise County Schools, Mountain Empire Community College, and University of Virginia's College at Wise. The goal of our grant is to start a pathway starting in middle school. Right now, we have had students starting in the fifth grade, complete our course, and we hope to build this pathway into the career path, into the career field through high school, through college, through technical courses, whatever life, whatever pathway life brings them through. We hope to make that path transparent and make them feel safe and secure into a career in healthcare. Right now, the traditional pathway into healthcare, some pathways are very outlined. Some are sort of nebulous. They're sort of nebulous, they're a cloud. Even in the work we've done in these two years, I've learned information that I wish had been available to me when I was this age. I've learned about pathways and careers that I did not realize existed before. We hope to take that cloud and the sort of nebulous pathway that you can take and streamline it, starting in primary education, in middle school, getting these students information that there's not just nurse and doctor in hospitals. We have respiratory, we have lab, we have x-ray, and everything that goes in between, and all of the pathways that don't have to do with patient care as well. We've partnered in this year to be able to bring speakers to these students. Our first year, we didn't have that opportunity due to the COVID pandemic, but now, this last year, we've really been able to grow and develop this program to bring faces and information to these students that they would not have received otherwise. So some of the highway that we've developed here, we want to start, we have started in sixth and seventh grade with a career, with an introduction to careers in health and medical sciences, that is through the Wise County Career and Technical Center. With our grant, we were able to hire a teacher in year one. That was offered as a nine-week course where the students took it once a week. In the second year, continuing, we were able to expand that into a daily offering for our students, so they have the course every day for nine weeks now. That teacher travels to each school across nine weeks. We've also been able to start an introduction to health and medical sciences course at the Wise County Career and Technical Center, as well as partner with Mountain Empire to do in their governor's school track. After the wrap-up of the COVID pandemic, we were able to start job shadowing in our hospitals again, and that is an opportunity available to any student, as well as begin work on an internship for our certified nursing assistants that had not been available before. This will give them more opportunities under a preceptor in acute care settings before they're kind of thrown out into the world, for the students who really want a more in-depth look at what healthcare looks like before they start their careers with us. In the folders that I've given you, I've given you some of the outlines of the different pathway work that we've been able to achieve so far with Valid Health. We've outlined different job opportunities that are available within our system, but just as a whole, if you go anywhere, what you would be looking at if you wanted to be a phlebotomist, a medical lab technician, an ultrasound technician, what you're looking at school-wise, how long you're going, what kind of grades you need to get now, and what kind of courses, and what you're going to be looking at career opportunity-wise in the future. In our first year, we were able, with our one-week offering, or our one-week rotation, we were able to seat 880 students across the six schools in Wise County and the city of Norton. And in our second year, we've had around 248. That reduction due to the fact that we're, we made it a mandatory offering the first year, they were able to sort of shoehorn it in as their resource. And the second year, we made it an elective course for those students to take. Of those 248 students, approximately 81 were re-enrolled from the first year. So that's 10% of the first-year students elected to take this course again in their And through that work with the Claude Moore Charitable Foundation, we have been able, the most valuable piece of information that we've come away from this entire thing, funding is always great, but we've really strengthened our communication between these entities. We've been able to open broad communication, broader communication for career and pathway development between Mountain Empire, UVA Wise, and Wise County Schools, as well as open up communication to areas of the state that we didn't previously have. We've got partners now in Northern Virginia, Eastern Virginia, and the middle of the state as well. And that's all I have, so I will open up the floor for any questions.
Now I know you've done this with Wise County. What would it take to get this in place in Lee County?
You tell me you're interested and we'll start the paperwork. They do an annual grant application with the Claude Moore Foundation, as well as the application through the Career and Technical Center to get the course off the ground.
I would ask the board for that blessing to work with her to get that going in Lee County.
Sure. Great, thank you all.
Sounds like I'll be in touch.
Thank you all so much. You have a good evening.
Thank you. Next, we have board comments. Do we have any board comments?
I am proud of all the, our students that are doing so well throughout the county. So thank you, students and parents.
Yeah, I wouldn't forget about the, especially the spring sports, I've noticed. Track, softball, baseball, tennis, pins and whips. We had a lot of participation by kids, a lot more than it has been in the past. I think that's a good thing, I think that's a healthy thing. I think people are enthusiastic about the future of Lehigh Athletics, and it hasn't always been that way. That they appreciate the new facilities and things that, I mean, they had facilities before they couldn't even use. So it was just wasted space, and now they've gotten nice new facilities. Also want to make a comment. I got a text a couple of weeks ago about, a text that, have you banned a book? And I was like, I don't know what you're talking about. I thought it was being funny, quite frankly. That's just what I was told. And I said, whoever who told you that is an idiot, so just tell them that. We didn't ban any books. So about a week later, somebody asked me if I read a certain book, Demon Copy, something like that. I said, no. And they said, well, you really should read it. And I said, well, what's it about? And they told me, and they said, it's about Lee County and about issues in Lee County, and you'll recognize the people in it. And I said, well, I may check that out. Didn't put two and two together. Then Mr. Dean calls me the next Tuesday and he said, there's this lady that wrote this book, he said, have you heard of it? And I said, well, somebody mentioned it to me on Friday. And he said, well, she's been on, in a public forum and in the Bristol paper saying that Lee County Public Schools banned this book. So that is not true. And I don't think any of us on this board are very happy with this Kingsolver at this point. And I don't know what that's going to lead to. And everybody speaks for themselves, but nobody, nobody on this board banned the book. It's never even been discussed. Didn't even know there was such a book till, you know, a couple of weeks ago. So I just wanted to make that clear. Anybody else? Let's move on to the senate agenda, which includes, this will take a while, approval of minutes from the March 9, 2023 budget meeting and regular meeting, and the March 28, 2023 budget hearing for fiscal year 2024, approval of claims and expenditures, approval of update to school board policy GDN-Br, evaluation process informed for support staff, special education annual plan for 2023-24, Head Start Policy Council bylaws update, Head Start COLA and Quality Improvement Grant 03CH011285-04, approval of Lee County Career and Technical Center Annual Plan for 2023-24, Field Drill Elydale Middle School Lisa Engel Colonial Williamsburg, May 17, 2023, Field Drill Lee County Career Technical Center TFA State Track for Driving Contest Harrisonburg, Virginia, 4/13, 2023, Field Drill Lee County Career Technical Center FCC LA State Leadership and Recognition Conference, Virginia Beach, Virginia, 4/13, 2023, Field Drill Lee County Career Technical Center DECA ICDC National Conference/Competition, 4/21/23, Orlando, Florida, approval of disposal of surplus property for school board policy DN disposal of surplus items, approval of summer school dates, May 30, 2023, through June 15, 2023, from 8:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., approval of summer work hours, May 30, 2023, through July 20, 2023, and finally, approval of authorization for the division superintendent to fill vacancies existing or occurring between April 14, 2023, through May 11, 2023. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by a standing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I'm working on this here. Okay, any reports of the board? None, reports of the division superintendent?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in your package, you should have the list of the Kingsport Times News right on. We have representatives from Elydale, Jonesville Middle, and Pennington Middle. You also have copies of the drawing cards, and I think those are from all three middle schools as well, Pennington, Elydale, and Jonesville Middle. So I would encourage you to look at those, and when you see those students, thank them for their work and writing and being published in the paper. Enrollment, I think you all know, last few months, we've been up, we've been down. We're up this month, eight to 2766, which I think is the number we base the budget on. So that's a good thing. And we will, working on getting our March 31 membership finalized to see what that number will actually be, but that will be the end of our payment for the budget. Couple of items I think you need to be aware of. April is Autism Awareness Month, with April the 2nd being National Autism Awareness Day. April the 4th was School Librarian Appreciation Day. April the 5th was Paraprofessional Appreciation Day. April is Workforce Readiness Month in Virginia, with April the 12th designated as Workforce Readiness Day in Virginia. April the 26th is Administrative Professionals Day, and April is also National Mental Health Awareness Month. You have your operations update and your transportation update in your packets. Does anyone have any questions on those? I know we're finishing up a lot of the big capital projects. I also put the health insurance rates here. We had hoped to have you all of those finalized, but no one wanted to give us a final bid until they had the March claims, and those were not available, I think, till today. So we're meeting with the Health Insurance Committee tomorrow. They said that we'll have some more information that we can share with those. And I told you all the health insurance fund, the way it's been going, but I think we can stay, Mr. Belcher, you're on that committee, I think we can stay self-funded and not go fully insured. I think we just need to make our people more informed and alert of what health insurance means and, you know, when we go to the pharmacist, when we go to the doctor, what that means for our self-funded. But I will have a recommendation to you as soon as we get all those to you, or all of them to us.
All right. Unfinished business, I don't believe there is any, then we move to action discussion items. First is action affinity to issue requests for proposals, RFP, for the following big processes for fiscal year 2024, coal, propane, coffee paper, and dairy products.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask for, you all allow us to do that as we prepare for next school year?
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by a standing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Action affinity to approve renewal of current pest control and related services contracts.
Mr. Chairman, these contracts have the option of renewing those, and that is the recommendation administration to continue those for another year.
Who would come to this?
Pest control is lone pine out of Coburn, and related services gives stepping stones.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Some may.
Second.
Second.
Okay, second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by a standing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next is possible bus route from Thomas Walker High School.
Mr. Chairman, you asked me to put this item on there. I know we had some public comment last time, so this, you could take action denied if that is the will of the board.
I'm going to make the motion that we allow it to continue from Flatwoods Elementary to there, and I think the families that are affected live down in that area and will help them out, and they don't want to punish it in any way, so I'll make that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Do, does a bus go from Jonesville to Flatwoods?
Currently, we have two buses that would go from Jonesville Middle to Flatwoods Elementary.
So we'll offer the bus route from Jonesville to Flatwoods for those kids that want to take their child forward.
That would be up to the board.
I said Flatwoods. Well, I think the parents that live there close, Flatwoods would be convenient for.
Right, but the ones that's going to Jonesville, you're saying they have to take their kid all the way to Flatwoods School, to Middle Woods, right?
Well, the parents that were here last time, they're from down in that part of the county. They're the ones that were wanting.
But, so we're not going to offer a bus route from Jonesville Middle School to Flatwoods for those middle school age kids, what I'm asking.
My motion's for Flatwoods to Thomas Walker. Let's do, let's do that, then we'll talk about the others, okay? Because I know what you're saying.
I mean, if it won't, if it won't be fair to one group, then it would be fair to another.
I will say that I think you would still have a few students who, when you all discussed this, as only last time, you were going to phase out that bus route, and you were going to allow them to continue that through their high school experience. You will still have a couple of kids who are on that bus from Jonesville to Thomas Walker because they have not graduated.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. Call for a vote. All in favor signify by a standing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Are we going, are we going to have a ride?
From Jonesville? Don't sound like you're going.
Clear what they're already doing.
Already did, right.
No. That's not.
It's not clear, but that's what you're asking me.
Approval of Great Aspiration Scholarship Program.
Mr. Chairman, this is a program that would cost the school division approximately $1,500 per high school for Lehigh and Thomas Walker. It would, we would hire someone, not technically us, but the Great Aspiration Scholarship Program with our assistance, and it'd be someone in the school from approximately October to May to help our graduating students look for scholarship opportunities, fill out their federal information for federal aid, and I think it would help our students and expand the options that they would have, and I would ask that you all approve that.
Now, who would be doing this?
Great Aspiration Scholarship Program is the group that we would work with. They don't have a person yet. What they will do, it would also provide a job for someone in Lee County because they have asked that if, with your all's blessing, we would get Ms. Willis to propose the position with their requirements, and it would probably be a local person who would get this position that would get trained by them and then provide that service for our students.
So would we be paying?
No, they take care of everything, but $1,500 per school is what our contribution would be. But it possibly could give someone from Lee County a job as well.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by a standing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I will move, we move into closed session, discuss personnel under Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711A1, discuss student admissions under Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711A2, discuss student discipline under the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711A2, and do we, pending a direct litigation under Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711A7. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? All in favor signify by a standing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now in closed session.